Today is February 3rd, 2015. We'll call members Mike Ahern Chair, John Randlett Vice Chair, John Kelly, Stephen Rhodes, new member appointed by the Select Board, Bob Dragon, Bill Bolton Selectman's Representative, and Rebecca Hanson Conservation Commission. And Bob, you will be a voting member tonight. And let's see, we're going to move right on to item number three, which is public comments unrelated to what's on the agenda for tonight. Seeing nothing, we'll move right on to administrative matters.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the unrelated first.
Unrelated, yes. So that brings us to item number four, the continuation of the public hearing from January 20th. It's proposed amendment, the zoning ordinance. It is a public petition, and it is a change to the zoning article 11 administration enforcement which would involve property registration. I do want to make a couple of comments before I reopen the public hearing portion. Seeing the amount of people here last hearing, and I think that I allowed the meeting to get off target from what the purpose of the planning board, what our duty is, and our duty is to look at the proposed amendment and determine whether we want to, whether the board, individual members, would like to have this show up on the town ballot as recommended or not recommended. We went astray from what the protocol for the planning board's task is, and I did want to relay that information first. What we will do today is reopen the public hearing, and rather than go through and list all the different things that have already been listed and the same arguments that have been put forward, what I would like to do is to entertain any questions that were lingered. If you have answers to them, or bring up anything new, we would love to be able to hear that before the board would then take it back and consider it. I'm thinking that the hearing might be, it could be brief, looking for just new information. We will limit it to three minutes. One other thing, and I'm not sure if the board fully realized, when I asked that the Select Board consider inviting the police chief, that we didn't really realize that the police chief had signed the warrant of the proposed zoning amendment. So knowing that he had signed it, we're probably not going to have, we're not going to have him here because this is not the right venue to be discussing that, and there are other venues to be discussing how would we, other tools to control the behavior in the village or in the neighborhoods. And that is that there is a college community council whose meeting is, the next meeting is February 12th, Thursday, at 4:30 at the Town Hall, and that is the proper forum or the proper venue to talk about issues that you're having with the college community. So, we are going to now open back up the public hearing, and I'll let you know whether we get off target. Yes. Oh, also Julius has mentioned that there was a little bit of an issue getting the names in and being able to hear all the testimony. So we would ask you to come up to the podium, state your name, and your brief remarks. The time is 6:35, and I open up the public hearing. If there is anyone, we're going to go with town residents first, that would like to speak in favor of the proposed zoning. Yes, you can stand up.
Good evening, board members. I'm Lynn Mitchell. I live at 5 Keeble Street, which is in a single residential zone. I hope that you approve this zoning amendment or recommend it for a town meeting. I wasn't here January 20th. I won't hopefully repeat what's been said before. What I'd like to suggest to you is that I think that the registration process will help ensure that the rental units are established in conformance with applicable codes and regulations of the town of Plymouth. But I want to give you two examples that I think are important for you to know. I live next to a dwelling that is two-family, and it was converted to a two-family. It was converted on a zoning variance for two bedrooms. It's now advertised as three bedrooms. And so in terms of the registration process, we now have sort of an excess of students coming and going, and that I think expands the parking. There's signage that's not appropriate. There is added noise, added trash, and whatnot. There's a single-family home next to that that also has five bedrooms, and yet they say there's only three unrelated people in it, but there's four cars all the time. So in terms of four out-of-state cars, from what I understand. So in terms of registration, I think that you're going to be able to help monitor and make sure that people are following the rules, following the regulations in a more practical and disciplined way. I've spoken obviously with the town zoning enforcement officer, and he indicates that he can't manage how many bedrooms people have and whatnot, and yet when something was allowed to come into the single-family zone as a two-family, and it's expanded its use without any proper authorization, I think this would give him the opportunity to do that. So I thank you for your listening.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak in favor of the proposed? Yes, Reg?
Has been prepared a handout for you dutifully. Not to go over anything that we went over last time, although I see you have a new board member tonight who was not at that hearing, so I think that's going to be a bit of an issue for him. My husband last time spent a lot of time talking about how the petitioned article, of which I was a signer, was supported by the master plan. I don't want to go back over that again, but I think that's an important feature for us to keep in mind. And I won't again reiterate the same issue that the woman before me did, but one of the things that I would like to talk about tonight that I don't believe was talked about last time, was how failure to have our landlords complying with the existing zoning ordinance erodes the property values in Plymouth. When you have a home in the single-family, a residence in the single-family zone that's not conforming to the regulations, it lowers the property values in the whole neighborhood. And we certainly can't afford to have that happening in Plymouth. The other point I want to make is that these conversions from single-family homes into multiple-family homes is continuing as we speak. There is evidence that comes up every day, either by looking on Craigslist or counting cars in neighborhoods where this is happening. So I hope that you will support the petitioned amendment by giving it your recommendation for approval on the warrant. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak in favor of the proposed? Anyone from outside the town that would like to speak in favor? Yes?
Thanks, I'm not much, but I miss my kids. My name's Mary Crowley, and I live in Plymouth. And I have a question because I do support this amendment, and I do hope that the planning board will recommend it for approval. And I do recall at the earlier session of this hearing that I believe the town attorney had met with folks and suggested that this type of zoning amendment be proposed, but I can't remember, did he actually approve this?
Yes, he did.
He did?
Yes, the language, it's the language.
So we have a town administrator, a code enforcement officer, a police chief, a fire chief, and the town attorney.
The town, not to be misconstrued as endorsing it.
No, no, I know that, but we have those four individuals who signed the petition, and then the town attorney also approved.
The language, only the language.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. That was my point. I do hope you'll approve it.
Is there anyone left that would like to speak in favor of the proposed? Seeing no more, anybody that would like to speak in opposition to the proposed? Yes?
My name is Annie Schneider, and I am sorry to say that I don't know enough about the details. I was not here for the last meeting, so I'm somewhat uneducated. I would like to point out when somebody says, "We're watching our town change," and our town is, you know, homes are being subdivided within the home, that we need to look at how our world is changing. And I know, like, I want to own my own home quiet for the rest of my life. That's how I was brought up, and that's what I would love to see. But that is not what our next generation is seeing. Our next generation very likely isn't going to own a home or have a family in that kind of view that we have grown up with and we're comfortable with. But I don't know how many people in this room have children who've maybe had to move back home again, or can't find jobs. They're living a different life now, and I think one of the things our town needs to do is, you know, we have to at least look at that and accept that our world is changing. A lot of these kids who are in college, they're not going to walk out with a degree and have the kind of hope and plans that you and I walked out with a degree and had in our hands. So they're going to be looking at a different world. So the fact that homes are being subdivided, I think we need to look at that as a part of reality, and we need to maybe, you know, make that work for us, but to fight it and to dig our heels in against it is not going to help our own children. I don't have kids, I don't get to say that, but plenty of people in this room have children, and they've watched their children struggle financially into this next move. It has not been the same move that you and I had. That is my first issue. The second issue is, I do see this as a discriminatory situation between, it's a divide between what people want to look at as traditional families and the college situation. And we have seen harassment, we have seen, we have seen a lot of harassment within that, and I can't answer for everybody in this room, but my experience with college kids and being exposed to renting to them has been excellent. It has been excellent. And so anyway, I don't want to go too much, but we need to look at how this world needs to change, and how things need to be divided up, and to dig our heels in against it, I think is a mistake. Thank you.
Anyone else, again, town of Plymouth residents that would like to speak in opposition? Yes, Charlie. If you'd come up to the podium and state your name and your address.
I don't know if it's opposition, but my name is Charlie Barker. I live at 26 High Street. So I kind of live right on the line of the campus, college campus, and the residential area. And I've had the house across me go from a family to college students. And looking at this property registration, I have a few problems with it. One is, I'm actually opposed to the fact that we're trying to get a fee out of the landlords for every house that they register. I think that's, you know, just another tax that the town's trying to get money out of somebody's pocket for somebody to shuffle some paperwork. So I don't agree with that. I don't think we should charge the landlords a fee to register their houses. That being said, I think having this registration is a good thing, and for two reasons. One is, I think, one for the, you know, the way the town is having more kids park on lawns and all that, there's already those rules in place that aren't enforced. And I think having this might make it a little easier to enforce some of that. So I think that this might be a good thing. And the biggest thing is, from a safety standpoint, if you've got a three-bedroom house and you've got eight kids packed in there, heaven forbid if anything happens, trying to get people out of a house that's either on fire or there's some emergency. And, you know, it's a three-bedroom house, the guys that are going to go in and do some, you know, a search or whatever, they're expecting three people. They're not expecting eight. So I think having this might solve some of that problem, and it might keep homes that go from a three-room house. I mean, that's fine if college kids want to go in there, let's rent it to them. They're human beings too, and I've got kids right across the street, and I've had one problem with them all year, and they've, you know, kids have been living there for years. And it's just, you've got to go over and say, "Hey, guys, you're in a family neighborhood." You know, throwing F-bombs and staying up till 2:00 in the morning. You want to live here, that's great, welcome to the neighborhood, here's a shovel, but you gotta, you know, you gotta, you know, respect your neighbors too. So I think that's a good thing for them to learn. And I don't think this is overly cumbersome for the landlords. I mean, maybe it is if they've got 100 kids, but it shouldn't be too hard to make it simple. So I'm for this, but I think we should strike the fee thing. That really kind of, and I'm sure some of the landlords could say, geez, if I had to do this for every fee, $5 fee for everybody, you're kidding me, you're hitting me up with money? I think the town's really just, you know, that's the one thing that set me off, but I think this is a good thing. Thank you.
One thing I want to remind people is that we are talking specifically about this amendment, and Charlie did make reference to the amendment several times, but I want to make sure that some of the things that might have been talked about is going towards what should be a topic at the CCC, the College Community Council meeting. So is there anyone else that would have a comment in opposition to the proposed amendment?
I'm Kim Lamb, and I live on 10 Bell Road, and I am in opposition. I know this is bigly targeted towards these kids. I own properties that we actually rent to graduate students and professors, and that is a big, huge part of what we do, and this is targeting in those ways, those people that we need to rent to. Like what Annie was saying, it's a different world. I have one guy that's been in my apartment for six years, that's a professor. So there is a subgroup, and the university is trying to expand their graduate programs and pull in more because everybody's dwindling on the university side, so they're trying to figure out how to stay above water. So we need these properties for, I can't tell you how many calls I get for graduate students looking. So there are a whole, there's this very small subgroup of troublemakers, and on a whole, most of them are responsible. So I think this will hurt people that are actually looking to purchase properties for that reason. Maybe they need to cater to graduate students or professors or those subgroup that don't have the money to buy a house.
Yes, town of Plymouth still?
Yeah.
Great.
My name is Zach Stowe. I live on Artisan Lane here in Plymouth. I just want to say I can sympathize with anyone who lives next to the college kids. As a lot of people had mentioned, I used to live on Langdon Street, so, you know, I've experienced a lot of this thing. I'm against this ordinance for a lot of reasons, and I would hope that you guys don't recommend this. The registration isn't going to change what, you know, people get rented to right there. And, you know, as far as collecting information, the town already has a lot of this information. I can look up on the town's very own website and tell you the name of the owner of every property on Merrill Street going right down, and you get their address right off the Sustenance Department. I think that, you know, adding this is an undue burden on the landlords that are doing a good job, and the scope of it's going to affect a lot more people than just the downtown student area that they're trying to target. You know, the zones that they say will be affected, they exist outside of the village. And, you know, it seems as though it's discriminatory, and, you know, you can't single out one group. You know, I think that, you know, as Bob Dragon said last week, you know, this needs to be an enforcement issue, and shifting the focus away from, you know, penalizing the landlords that are doing a good job, and, you know, the landlords that aren't doing a good job managing them, they're probably not going to do it anyway. And then the people that are, you know, working toward this, you know, working toward, you know, having a, you know, a nice coexistence, you know, are the ones that are paying the fee. I just sincerely hope the board members do not recommend this, and it really does nothing to address the issues, it only creates the burden for good landlords.
Anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Yes, John?
Before I get started on my remarks, I would like to bring up one point that I've kept hearing from almost everyone.
Can you state your name and address?
I'm sorry. My name is John Harnoys. I live at 3 Pearl Street. They're not kids, they're adults. If the federal government says poop at the stroke of midnight of your 18th birthday, you're an adult, okay, let's treat them like adults. Let's raise the bar, not lower it, because when you call them kids, you do two things. You allow the young adult a way out of accepting responsibility for their actions, excuse me, the consequences of their actions. Two, you allow the adult a way to blow it off by saying, "Oh, well, boys will be boys." Let's call them young adults and treat them like that. I know, I'm a founding member of the college council, and I kept hearing that, and I kept injecting that into the meetings, they're adults. That said, I'm sorry, I just had to say that. I've been a resident of the town of Plymouth for 40 years, and a landlord for about 30 years. I'm against this article for several reasons. You can put lipstick on a fee, but it's still a tax because it's mandatory. I don't get to choose. If this goes through, I have to pay. I'm paying $7,100 in property taxes now. How much more am I going to have to pay? I don't know. This is vague. Also, it's discriminatory because it's against a certain segment of our community, namely And if the town is going to charge landlords a fee for safety issues, then maybe everybody that has young adults, students, be charged a tax? I think that would be fair. It does not address the behavioral problems that I think are at the real heart of this issue. This ordinance does not do that at all. What I would suggest, and you brought this up, is bring back some of the things that the college council used to do, mainly block parties. I'd kick in some money, we'd have some hamburgers, some hot dogs, some soda, put some names to the faces so that it doesn't become an us-against-them type of mentality, an us-against-them type of an issue. You're putting names with them, and people understand you have a problem, let's talk about it. Because talking about it is much more, is a much better situation and solution to problems than forcing things on people. And lastly, when is enough enough? I mean, are we going to have a color code enforcement officer someday that we have to pay a fee to check in and see if I can paint my property a certain color, or is somebody going to come by and say, "Hey, your grass is kind of high, I better cut that. We're going to charge you, we're going to find you." When's enough enough? When do the intrusions stop? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I have a point of order, I think just for clarification. The zoning amendment before the planning board was brought forward by the public, by public petition. It was not written by the planning board. And because it was brought forward by the public with 25 signatures of registered voters, none of the syntaxed or the verbiage that is on the amendment can be changed. So I just want that really clear. I know there's some folks here that weren't at the meeting last time, but this is, in its format, is presented to the board for recommendation or non-recommendation. There are absolutely no changes allowed, and it is by public petition. You did not author it, you're just either giving a recommendation as a board or not.
Thank you for clarifying, Sharon. Yes?
In the, sorry, I can't, I'm not, I'm just looking for a little bit of context. Nick Mason, 57 Merrill Street, North Star Rentals as well. Nothing in the wording of this specifies that it's in the downtown area or that it is college student rental. In my interpretation of it, this would, if you have, if you live out on Route 3A or Tenny Mountain Highway or somewhere, and you have an in-law apartment, you would have to register as well. Am I correct in that?
Yes, you are. The actual, excuse me, the text of the amendment speaks to zoning areas, so that's how you figure out where.
Right. So basically, anybody, anywhere in the town, I mean, we know.
It says owners of property who rent any portion of their property.
Right. Will be responsible for, okay. Speaking to a little bit of what's been said, one problem I had, I had addressed it last time, the vague wording of this, if it said an annual fee, then we would understand this essentially as a tax. If it said a one-time fee at the time of registering, that would provide a little bit of clarity on what we can expect going forward. And then, sort of the last, I feel like I had one more thing I was going to say, but of course I'm forgetting it now that I'm standing up here at the microphone. I'll have to come back up. I'll turn on the floor. So obviously, there's no wording changed, and this affects everybody. I know that the root of this problem really can be traced to one specific house. I mean, 90% of the conversations that we've had at last meeting, at the meeting with the lawyer, and at various CCC meetings have been in regards to 29 Merrill. So we know that's a problem, and I know I'm not going to speak for the other landlords, but I'm sure that everybody in this room would love to solve the 29 Merrill problem. I'm sure that everybody in this room would like to solve the problem of college neighborhoods encroaching on everybody. I don't know that this is the right tool. I don't know that this actually is going to do much of anything, to be honest with you. And the last, oh, and the last part I was going to, everybody who rents in this town, there's been a lot of talk that somehow these single-family houses that are being bought are being turned into multi-unit dwellings. And that might be true occasionally, but I would say in general, that is probably not true, because everybody who rents, what are you getting a lot of questions from when people call? What are they looking for? They want a whole house. I mean, that's becoming more and more something that people are looking for. They are actively seeking a freestanding, single-family home because they don't want a neighbor above them or below them who are telling them to quiet down or call the cops. So that's become something that people are actively pursuing when they are looking for apartments, is a single-family home, which is making that more of a desirable rental for both local landlords as well as, you know, absentees.
Thank you.
Just for clarity.
And I do want to clarify. Nick said, "This petition, proposed petition to ensure public safety and further zoning compliance, owners of property within the single-family residential, multifamily residential, civic industrial, and village commercial zones." Are there other zones that are going to be part of this, or just those zones?
No, this is as written.
Okay. So he said that anybody who rents within the town of Plymouth was his question? No, that was not his question.
Unless their property comes under one or more of these zones.
Does that answer your question now?
Yes.
It's agriculture.
It's agricultural. It's residential agriculture. So it's, it's outside town. Like Mike, where your house is, it's not, it's, that's actually.
Do you haul within one of these zones? Or no?
I don't believe agriculture does. Because there's no agriculture in the center of town, I'm not sure why. I'm not sure what the...
I don't know how that math deals, but I believe it's outside of town, it's a different zone.
Which, I know we can't change it, we can't change the wording, but it's no less tragic if somebody dies in a fire in an uninspected apartment in the agricultural zone than it is downtown.
Or an unregistered family. Excuse me, there's... Excuse me, there's-
Yes, I'm sorry, sorry.
So we're going to move on and again, part of the topic that was, just talked about 29 Merrill, that would be something to be brought up at a college community council meeting. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition of the proposed amendment? Yes, outside of town now. Go ahead.
I'm Marlene Stope. I currently live in Ashland, New Hampshire, but for a lot of years I lived in Plymouth. And some of those years was beside both student rentals and year-round people. This ordinance here, I don't think, I hope you do not endorse it, I don't think it addresses any of the real issues that we were hearing about the problems. We already have a town inventory, so you get people's names and phone numbers and addresses. So this would just be duplicate of what we already have on the books. In addition to that, what I think the ordinance is missing is how you do address these problems. There's ways to address these problems that are out there. And you've got a lot of people here with a lot of experience and expertise who've been doing it for, for me, 31 years. But the college addresses these problems, we address these problems, these landlords that are here, we all address these problems, these behavioral problems. This ordinance is trying to address behavioral problems, but the way it's written, it doesn't do it. It does not address any behavioral problems at all. All it does is duplicate what we already have on the books for giving name and address and phone number, property owners. And then putting an additional burden on charging some unknown fee. In the last meeting, it did come down to, people were saying, well, yeah, this seems like it's more of an enforcement issue. I think that you do need to go back to what the college community council is doing, what they have done in the past, what landlords have done. The school has a disciplinary board, we have all kinds of tricks up our sleeves on how we deal with these issues. But it takes a community to do it. It takes the neighbor, it takes the people, it takes the police, it takes the code enforcer officer, possibly. Maybe not, because, you know, people having some of the behaviors they're exhibiting is not a code enforcement issue. But this particular write-up doesn't address any of those things and it doesn't have any solutions for any of those things. I'm a solutions kind of person. Let's go to people who have successfully solved these issues and do what they do. We write to the parents, we write to the school disciplinary board, we have them go before the school disciplinary board, we contact police if we need to, the school can have them go to counseling. There's a lot of avenues here to change the behavioral problem that we're having without putting a duplicate ordinance that's just going to burden the town for duplicate effort and cost the landowners a lot of money. That is a complete mystery. This thing is very vague and I really hope that you do not endorse it. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlene. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in opposition of the proposed amendment? Yes?
I'm Brian Miller, Webster Hill Road, Plymouth. I was one of the original signers of the petition because some of the parts of the petition had merit, and still do. But on hearing the discussion of it, the elements of the discussion is not about the types of houses or zones or land use regulations. They deal with disorderly actions of people who are living in those particular areas. And so I believe that this process of trying to use the planning and land use regulations to control people's actions and/or to mitigate disorderly actions by residents is inappropriate. When RSA 47:17, paragraph 2, which is order and police duty, when that is the order, that is the authority to act, granted to council, city councilmen, and Board of Selectmen to enforce noise ordinance, disorderly conduct, and other things through the law enforcement community. That's just what their name is, Law Enforcement Community. And so if we have an element of the type of subdivision of a house in the single-family, multifamily, triple-family, that would be something that would come before the planning and land use board effectively. But the fact is, what we have is an issue of people not being mindful and kind to their neighbor and getting out of hand in a disorderly manner. And that isn't something that the planning board really needs to try to get into and enforce. I think that's something through our law enforcement community. We have town ordinances, which are through the Board of Selectmen's authority to act, and we have the authority to act of the law enforcement community that works for that board to enforce our ordinances as written. And I suggest that I would recommend not supporting this petition.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of the proposed amendment?
Hello. I am Don Wiegelt from Innolakes Properties and thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the chance to speak and address you. Thank you for clarifying that we can't change any of this language. I do want to, one thing is still, I may be a little slower than some of us here tonight, but does this cover every zone in the town? Which zones are specifically excluded?
I believe it's just the agricultural zone.
Thank you. I guess I really would have to say to Mr. Miller, very well done. This is a planning board that represents the town, all the town, all the town, all the zones. I am against this amendment, petition, whatever we want to call it, because it's not for the whole town. Number two, the ambiguity in it. When you put in things, once registered, the owner shall properly report any changes. Define any changes. New car, our properties change every four months, roommates hate roommates, they fight, they can't get along with each other even though they chose to, blah, 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 changes occur. So what is the definition of that change? The ambiguity in here, number two, it's not all the town, and number three, cost. I am a little surprised by the petition that's even here because we seem to have in place a very good scenario right now. I know when we call the code officer, and ironically, we're having an issue, not with a rental, with a year-round, single-family, that abuts one of our properties, two of our properties. This ordinance doesn't solve that. But whenever we do call, we do get a response. I've watched the university, the police department, go and meet proactively with houses that have been problems or issues. And reading the minutes from the last meeting that you folks had, it seemed to be about behavior of one or two properties. Been doing this for 35 years in your town and the pendulum swings one way, swings the other way, and goes back. Yes, there are problem houses. Yes, there will be problem houses next year. And it all depends on how we deal with them. We have a very, very responsive code officer, we have a very, very responsive police department, we have a very, very responsive university. If we're going to make an amendment that's going to change behavior, we failed. It isn't going to work. Planning board should be looking at land uses, how properties are being used, what's been approved and what hasn't been approved, and enforcing that through the rules that we already have in place. I ask you to look carefully at the language and picture this, if this was your property, would you be happy with that language being enforced upon you? Secondly, we're all very concerned with taxes in this town. And if we think one code officer with some ministerial assistance can handle this, you're foolish. You will be looking at additional costs. So once again, Mr. Whitmiller, very well spoken, very well addressed, and I thank you for your time.
Anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Then I would open it up to anyone who would like to speak of just a general nature before we bring it back to the board and close the hearing. Yes?
Thank you. My name is Kevin Young. I live on 2 Langdon Park Road. I addressed the committee last time and will not review that. I would like to say that I was someone who got 27 signatures in support of this from the local community. There are two neighborhoods here who are specifically watching the actions of the board at this point. That they are looking to the board to see if there is support for maintaining the quality of our neighborhoods and in helping us control problems. I think after the last meeting, there was a consensus that there were enforcement issues and that there were major events and activities going on, that the purpose of this meeting, to my understanding, was to find out why enforcement was not being done and whether it could be done, whether existing codes could be enforced without this particular provision. That I haven't heard too much addressed to that. I will say that one event since the last meeting involved the town enforcement officer who took a complaint from one of these community groups that had to do with a Craigslist advertisement for a five-bedroom student house in town. It was actually apparently put on by someone who spoke in opposition to this at the last meeting, that the code enforcement officer did handle that to the neighborhood's satisfaction. But we are still impressed that enforcement remains a problem and we are watching to see whether these things can be enforced. We were hoping that this board could get input from the chief of police and from enforcement officers about why things were having problems. But until that is done, I don't know why the board would conclude that requiring registration does not assist on that. The community groups are being told that getting into a house requires a search warrant that requires data collection and it is a process that is difficult and that is the basis of the enforcement. This is a way of getting into the buildings without a search warrant and we're hearing people say that it should be enforceable. The town lawyer is saying it's not, the police chief is saying it's not. I would appreciate it if this board would address enforcement issues by sorting some of that out. Thank you.
I'm not sure if you were here at the beginning of the meeting, before we opened up the hearing, but I did mention that this was not going to be the proper venue to have the police chief here and speak, that our job was, got off task a little bit and that we were just going to address the proposed amendment and not try and solve any problems. That would be the job of the community, the college community council, to deal with those issues. So that kind of answers a little bit.
I just have a quick question, Mike.
Yes.
Charlie Barker, again, 26 Miami. Is the code enforcement officer, does he run through this board or through?
I believe the Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen. So really to have the discussion about enforcement of-
That's correct.
The rules that are already in place, that are placed by you and the select board, is through the select board? Is that correct?
Yes.
I mean, just to, you know, and I agree with you, Mr. Young, is that, you know, enforcement's probably the biggest problem.
And our job as the planning board is very limited in that our, we are to look at proposed zoning amendments and have a hearing and decide amongst the board whether we recommend it passing or not.
Just another point of information, Mr. Chairman, the request to have the code enforcement officer and the chief of police here, the protocol was to bring him before the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen, and Mr. Bolden can speak to that, took it under advisement and felt that this was not the proper venue for that. And also, as you had said earlier, that the signature of those parties on the petition did speak to this particular amendment, but it was apples and turnips, very much so. So I just wanted to clarify that. The Board of Selectmen, which is, you know, the authority in these issues, did decide that it, you know, judiciously, that this was not the correct venue for that.
All right. Yes?
I have a couple of questions, may I ask?
Sure, come on up.
One question, and I think I know the answer-
And state your name again, please.
Mary Crowley. Sorry, I'm still Mary Crowley, ever so. I think I know the answer to this question, but I would ask one of you folks or Sharon to clarify for me. The zoning ordinances for the town of Plymouth have different areas designated and different standards or rules regarding anything from signage to construction to density can vary from zone to zone, correct? So the fact that the agricultural zone isn't included in this isn't necessarily a huge departure from other parts of the zoning ordinance where, you know, the village commercial district, for instance, is treated differently than the full commercial district versus the agricultural district, is that-
Every zone essentially has a formula, usually based on dimensional requirements, with the exception, and of course, that's why the zoning ordinance is so aggravating, shall we say, to implement at some points, because the general rules of that you'll find in the tables, lot sizes, this and that, don't necessarily apply, for example, in the village commercial zone because it's too compact. So there's a dimensional use on one side. The other portion of the formula is what is prescribed in terms of occupancy, that's pretty standard, no more than three unrelated. However, if you have individual dwelling units in a building, like an apartment house, then it's a maximum of six, but it's also based on area. So it's a little squirrely. In terms of the agricultural district or the commercial industrial district, industrial development district that was not addressed, excuse me, in the language of this, they operate by the same formulas. We, I can't, as the planner and the board can't, speak to why they were left out because this is a publicly proposed petition, they just were.
No, 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 I wasn't asking you to do that. I was just asking, within our zoning ordinances, there are variations-
Right, but the same, the same-
There are zoning ordinances, I guess I'm asking, are there some zoning ordinances that affect a particular or some particular zones differently than others?
Right, I would have to look at the table, but rental housing is definitely allowed in the agricultural zone if it meets the criteria. So there's-
So that was one question that I had, thank you. And the other question is regarding the issue of fees, because fees are set by the select board and, Bill, maybe you can tell me whether or not, at the time at which the select board, if for instance this were to pass, at the time that the select board might calculate a fee and it would look at some of the things that have been discussed here tonight, you know, does the fee get assessed annually? Does it get assessed on a per-registration basis? And at that point, is there, those conversations, are they public conversations where folks who are concerned about fees in the- about fees in this room could address themselves to the select board?
They should be public. And for the fact that we have three board members here tonight, I think, you know, we know now that it shall be public.
Yeah, thank you. So, there is, you know, if, there is another place beyond this room where input may be shared around fairness of fees, appropriateness of fees, how they might look. Yeah, thank you. Those were my two questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. Is there any more comments of a general nature before we close the public hearing? Yes?
I'm still Lynn Mitchell.
Okay.
I just, I guess like Mary, I just have a question. Is there any zoning ordinance in the town right now that allows the zoning enforcement officer to administratively inspect single-family homes or two-family homes in the town, if anybody knows?
Well, I can only speak generally to that, Lynn. I think, you know, the overarching authority is life safety code, so it would be fire department. So, it really depends. I mean, when you have a rental unit, it has different criteria.
Right.
So, if it's just a single-family home, then it's the normal thing, unless there's an overt violation.
And so, what's defined as an overt violation?
Well, I, health and safety.
Okay. So, it's only health and safety. So, if, in fact, there might be a violation, there might be four unrelated people in four cars.
Well, there's, there's.
You can't go inside the home to check and see if there are actually four people living there.
Well, it has to come to the level of a warrant in its truest sense. I mean, not conjecture, not theoretical, not somebody thought they saw. I mean, it has to be brought to.
So, I can't go into the, I mean, I've got a neighbor who I can't go into his home to find that out, and I'm not asking to get into those details.
We're not here to talk about that.
I understand. But in terms of trying to maintain the integrity of the neighborhoods, when you have rental homes in the single-family neighborhoods, and they're having lots of students and lots of parking issues and whatnot, if there's no way to inspect currently, that's what this speaks to, is that you can go and inspect to make sure that the dwelling unit is being used as, is committed in that zone. So, if you have a single family.
It's a tool which might support that, depending on the particular, and I'm not being evasive, but it's always depending on the particular situation and the nuances. Like I said, every situation is different.
I understand that. I understand that.
It really is, because the criteria's different, because the particulars are different.
But that's why you would have an inspection, to make sure that they meet with the rules, essentially, right? And so, if you've got a two, if you've got a two-family that was allowed to go two-family.
But any ordinances that are being violated have to be violated. Life safety codes and noise ordinances are not the same type of redress, if you will, because the triggers are different.
Right. I understand. And so, this one at least says, okay, let's maintain the integrity of the neighborhood by having a registration, so that this home is registered for three bedrooms, or this home's registered for two bedrooms, although you can have three fam, three, sing, three unrelated people living there, but you can only have two bedrooms or whatever it is. So, if you were registered for what was appropriate for that home or what was allowed for that home, you would be able to maintain sort of the integrity of that particular dwelling on each occasion, correct?
I lost you. I'm sorry.
Anybody else follow me? Yes, no? All right. Do you?
Yeah, I guess I follow you.
Okay. So, this, I mean, being able to administratively inspect, that's what I'm trying to understand. So, we don't have a zone, we don't have an ordinance for that.
And this proposed amendment can basically say, they can put anything they want in there.
Right.
And no matter what, it gets voted on by ballot.
Correct. I understand that.
And at that point, I mean, it can say anything that might be or could be or may not be.
Yep.
Legal, but it's, there's nothing we can do about it here.
I understand.
And there's, I don't think we have a definitive answer. None of us are attorneys.
No, but the attorney looked at it and said legally, it's okay. He's not supporting it.
The language.
The language is okay.
Format, the syntax.
Okay, got it.
That's, that's all he could speak to.
I understand.
Yeah.
So, he wouldn't have supported something that was inappropriate legally.
Oh, no. No, he's neutral.
I'm not asking what his position was. I was just asking what, that he supported the legal posture of the ordinance.
The language.
Yeah, but he would say it would be contrary to law if, after reading it, it looked contrary to law, which he did not.
Right. That's what I'm trying to understand. Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak of a general nature before we close the public hearing? I'll go with you first and then Frank.
I'll be very brief. Just, it's Annie Schneider. Just, if this is related to registering people, and some of it obviously has people's concern about how many people are in a house, if they're unrelated, they're related, or whatever, I guess I still find it discriminatory in that if it's still rental, so, any landlord's still rental, and it's a family, and they're all related, and you don't always necessarily know exactly minute to minute, nor do I think you're really allowed to check or go into the house and see, in a family, who's registered, who's not, how many people, you know, how many cousins are there, whatever. So, you know, I find it discriminatory with, to be able to have this whole registration to base it on, you can only come in out of safety. Well, what about some big clog of a family who may or may not be safe? I just think it is, I really hope that you will look at this carefully and decide that this is, this is not the subject that this paper is trying to address, and I hope you will turn this down. Thank you.
Yes, Frank?
Just the previous discussion about conditions of houses and so on, but all the powers of the various department heads, like fire chief, police chief, all come through the Board of Selectmen under RSA forty-seven, colon, seventeen. And I think it would be nice if people would actually go online and read the purpose and intent of the duties and responsibilities of Board of Selectmen to ensure the equality of life and quality of living within a town. And their powers are quite extensive. There's quite a bit of list on them. But the things that have been just discussed are contained in RSA forty-seven, colon, seventeen. And as far as conditions of housing, RSA forty-eight, right behind forty-seven, talks specifically about conditions of houses and the process in which the health officer, or the fire chief, or police chief, or whatever, may take the appropriate legal, lawful, and valid action for mitigation of it. Okay? So, that process within that RSA system, by the way, that started back in seventeen sixty-three. Our zoning ordinance, we started in nineteen sixty-one. I think the action to try to facilitate people who are, don't have a good idea of orderly living within a neighborhood, whichever neighborhood, need a process through the law enforcement community under the power and jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen and not the land use regulation system. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak of a general nature before we bring it back to the board? Yes. Briefly?
Very brief. Just, Arlene Stope, Ashland. I just want to say, my experience with living in a neighborhood with both students near, next door and year-round next door, quite honestly, the year-round people were actually more obnoxious than the students. The students had their occasional party, but the year-round people left their dog tied up twenty-four-seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a week. The dog was cold. It was barking five o'clock every morning, every single day. So, this ordinance is not going to change the fact that you could have a bad neighbor, whether it's a year-round person or whether it's a student. And really, you really have to, rather than put more ordinances on the books, you've already got the inventory forms where we put all of that stuff down. You put down, you know, who's in the house, and the name of the landlord, and the address, all that information you have. This is just going to be a repeat of that and an extra burden on both the town and us. Thank you.
Seeing no more of the public hearing, I'll close it at seven twenty-nine and bring it back to the board.
John?
I'd just like to say, I mean, the amendment is written, it's going to be on the ballot. The whole process is, again, does the planning board support this amendment, or do we not support it? And I think that's, you know, nobody can change it. It is what it is. It's legally brought forward. It'll be on the ballot, and the citizens of Plymouth will decide.
Anyone else who would like to talk about the proposed amendment?
Well, I do agree that you can't assure good neighbors, and this is not, the intent for this is not to assure that. But I'm thinking that the intent for this particular amendment is to provide a tool for the code enforcement person, the town planner, to see exactly what is being utilized by the rentals in this town. And it may be targeted to certain zones. That may be where the problems, you know, are focused. But I think it's, since it's met the bar of the attorney review, and it is a tool, if not complete, for providing data to the town code enforcer. It just seems like it's, you know, kind of an innocuous tool to put in effect, and I would support it.
Did you say you would support it?
I did.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the board would like to speak? Yes, Bob?
Very sympathetic to both the pros and cons, as I said at the last meeting, on this issue, but I still think enforcement is the key. I think the petition is probably should petition Board of Select, the select board, to tell them they have these problems and find out what we have on the books that we can do to enforce these with the police, the fire, whatever. See if there's some room there to reach this problem. But at this point, I just seriously, again, have a real problem with the enforcement of this. Now, are we gaining anything? So, I think the Board of Select should get involved with the petitioners and try that avenue before we get into something like this. Thank you.
May I continue? So, I would agree with that, but at least the start for that is to discover. And actually, last hearing, Gabe, I forgot the guy.
Yeah.
His last name.
Check, yeah.
So, you know, he was citing different statutes, and one of them was RSA five forty. And in five forty, it does indicate that any, there should be a tool in effect that any housing code adopted by a municipality pursuant to RSA forty-eight A, which Mr. Miller was referring to, or for the enforcement of any municipal health code, building code, or fire, life safety code, a municipality may establish a reasonable filing fee to cover the cost to the town or city clerk of maintaining a record of the filings required by this section. You know, it indicates that there should be like a discovery tool to find out what exactly is being done in a rental, you know, should it be the number of people, you know, residing there. It's beyond just a name, a phone number, and address of an owner. You know, it's exactly what, you know, what the conditions are for that particular establishment. And RSA five forty does, you know, accommodate that. So, that would be a useful tool for the code enforcer and the select board to utilize and take action from.
I do have a question.
Yes.
How many rental properties are there in town now?
I don't know. I mean, I mean, sometimes you can have, I mean, a commercial property or a house with, you know, renting a room or an apartment. This is, this is.
I guess my question goes back to the, to the order of magnitude of the fees that are going to be required to support the effort. And someone was saying that it's more than a full-time job to go around and police all these rentals. So, we're looking at another town employee that, you know, sixty grand a year or what, I don't know. Bill?
I don't think the outcome of this would be to then hire a staff person.
No.
I think the outcome of this would be to establish a database, you know, come up with an access data, you know, be able to collect this data, come up with a form to collect the data. And, you know, so it wouldn't incorporate a new staff person, I assume. You know, it would be more, well, you know, so I think it's just targeting, you know, the actual tool itself and to then compile all the data.
We have, Steve, we have land use records by property, but that doesn't necessarily tell us what's going on unless it's overt. That's, you know, so, yeah, the data's there, but it's not a data set that's configured for use of ease, of ease of use.
So, I guess my further on question would be, the rented portion is subject to administrative inspections, so that's going to be part of this data collection process, or?
So, you know, actually, referring back to Gabe, it's inconsequential whether that language is there or not theoretically. That's his interpretation of it for the fact that we can do administrative inspections. And, you know, the code enforcer, I think, has done that with the police chief of, so I think if there are, if there's evidence that is contrary to the code that indicates a violation, then administrative inspection could occur.
Without this, is what you're saying?
I think this.
Or with this, it's the only way.
This is definitely a clarification, and it's a statement of fact that's probably already exists, but, you know, there's no problem with that.
So, you're saying, your interpretation is that, and I didn't hear the, I haven't heard the town attorney speak to this, but you have, and you're saying that it clarifies for the town employees that inspection would be easier of rental property?
See, I don't think it, well, I don't think it becomes easier to do administrative inspection. It still has to be a finding of.
There are, there are, once again, it's the same old thing. There's the state RSAs which apply to certain aspects of tenancy of rental units, depending on how they're quantified, you know, three or more restricted properties. So, you've got all this miasma of stuff going over here, and then you have it on the local level, and sometimes they intersect, and sometimes they don't. So, there are statute, RSAs, statutes that apply to the rental property arena, but it's usually, once again, very specific to what's happening on the property. Is it an apartment house? Is it, does the landlord own three or more properties in a town? And then, you know, that triggers, that kicks in an inventory form that comes out of the town clerk's office. There's a, once again, it's government, and it's not here to help you. It's here to confuse you. And I believe that was the premise of, as it was explained to me by the authors, their intent was to have this used as a tool. No, that's, we have to look at it on its face. It's prima facie.
Anything else the board would like to speak? I made my opinion clear at last hearing. I don't know if I need to reiterate that. I feel that the landlords are being targeted to a, to a pretty high degree. I, I have some issues with it, but it's, it's obviously the entire board's vote, and we get to not make any decisions. All we get to do is to vote whether we recommend approval or not.
Do you want?
And that would go to the town ballot for the public to make this decision. It is not the planning board that makes any decision on this, on whether it is passed or not.
Mr. Chairman, just a, just a point of qualification. So, our recommendation is that it be put on the town warrant.
It's going to be on the town warrant already.
It's already going to be on there. So, we're recommending that it pass.
Right.
Correct? Correct?
Recommend and appro-
Recommend, recommend or not recommend.
Approval.
Right, that the voters approve it.
And I believe it's just if it's a majority. I believe it would say the planning board recommends approval if it's a majority. Against it, it would say the planning board does not recommend passage.
And you would have a simple majority here because you have all seven of you. It wouldn't be a tie vote, because there are no abstentions allowed in this particular vote. So it would be very clear. And, and by the way, just another point of clarification, because we have been looking into this carefully, doing our due diligence. We spoke with the town's attorney. The, the language that is included above a warrant article that says, for example, the Board of Selectmen recommend approval, do not recommend approval, the planning board recommends, does not recommend, that is ambivalent. It's ambiguous, and it cannot be changed, because we looked into perhaps having a little more clarification, but it would have to occur in the legislature as a change to the RSA. So you've got to go with that verbiage. The planning board recommends approval, obviously by maturity vote, or the planning board does not recommend approval. So, it's, it's clear as mud.
If everybody, I guess, has their minds made up on how they're going to vote, then I'd say that we're ready for a motion. If we're not, if you don't think that you are ready, and you have a couple more questions, feel free to speak your mind before we do vote. Seeing no other hands up, then I would take a motion. Yes, Bill?
Mr. Chair, I recommend that we, recommend approval of the proposed petition.
There is a second by Mr. Kelly, the motion to approve by Bill Bolton. I will call for all those in, in favor of recommending approval, signified by saying aye.
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 Okay, could I say a show of hands, please? Thank you.
Those opposed, signified by saying nay. Nay. It looks like it's four to three, and the proposed amendment will go on the ballot with the planning board recommending approval. We'll take a minute and let the, the room clear, and then we'll go on with our meeting. I know my form's going to say-
Uh, none at this point.
Then just item number six, new business.
Uh, we have a regularly scheduled work session the day after tomorrow, which is Thursday, and we were anticipating Tara Bamford from North Country Council to come and start introducing the master plan process. She's got the flu. She's been very sick. She did let me know on Monday she was out a half of last week. So she will not be showing up, unfortunately, till our next work session in March. We do have that on the books. We've got two sets of minutes. We've got the new land use books, which I'm happy to say are in larger print for all of us older 25. They're twice as thick. I was so excited, you could actually read it without a magnifying glass. So, we have that too, just being administrative stuff and whatever else the board wants to bring up, but we will not be discussing the RFP work schedule because she's ill. I'm sorry.
And that would be in two days.
That's the day after tomorrow, right back here.
Any suggestions? So, we will meet Thursday? Are you thinking, John? Okay. We will meet Thursday, unless anybody has-
I'll call you from Florida, see what happens.
Now, I'll get those minutes out too, the draft minutes, because the ones from the 20th are fairly ponderous, so there's a lot to discuss.
All right, so we will, will we have anything else to talk about with the master plan? Anything else that we could bring up?
No, I'm just hoping everyone did, like I asked you to last time, take the original RFP and what North Country Council submitted. I gave you copies of those and compare and contrast to make sure that what we want to do is, is, there's no gaps.
Do we anticipate opening the meeting and closing the meeting, then?
Well-
John?
Oh, one thing, I know it doesn't, anything for the meeting or anything like that, but I have had dozens of people ask me what is happening behind McDonald's. They're doing a lot of excavations.
Yeah.
And we're supposed to be transparent in this board and everything, so I would like to at least be able to answer these people, and even if I don't know.
They came before the board and got approval for-
Site plan, site development.
For site development. So basically, they could put in roads and develop site, but they have no approval for any buildings to be built upon those sites. They can't build pads or anything, but they can move dirt, and they got all those approvals from the planning board. And I, I believe they're spending or doing that work with the anticipation that they would come forward at a later date to, with a site plan approval for a building.
Buildings plural, right. And it's a, it's a bit of a leap of faith, because it's rather costly to do all that. I mean, it's, it's in the floodplain, so there's a lot of work bringing stuff up above flood elevation. So, no, I was just going to say, I mean, I don't know, but I'm hoping when spring comes, we'll see something specific, because they need, they knew when they got the approval from you folks, the minute there was a building planned, they'd have to come back and submit a site plan application all over again, so.
Secondly, is, I'd like to say good luck to John Ray Linton, his attempt to become a selectman.
Does anybody have anything that they would like to discuss at Thursday's meeting, since it's a blank, it's a blank slate? Any topics that we could talk about, other than just showing up? Okay, we'll see you back here Thursday. Is there any other unfinished or other business?
I, I just have a, a notation from the town administrator that the Board of Selectmen will not be meeting this Thursday to go, to read the proposed warrant articles for their, their slate. They just, they don't, they're not required to by statute, and so therefore, the meeting that was somewhat proposed for Thursday, the 5th, is off the docket for them. However, we do not get a reprieve. We'll all be back here Thursday. So that's all I have.
Any public comments? Okay? That brings us to item number nine.
That was so fast, okay.
Meeting is over at 7:49. All right.